All right, well, good evening and welcome to our August regular meeting for Wasika Public Schools School Board. Today is Thursday, August 18th, 2022. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get to approving the agenda, I want to make a motion to amend our consent agenda for today and take out the minutes for July 21st, 2022, just because they're not ready yet. So we'll have them ready at our September meeting. So I have a motion to amend our consent agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And now can I get a motion to approve our agenda with the amendment as we just discussed?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with change.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, and moving on then to recognition of visitors. Thanks, everyone who is watching at home. We don't have anyone here in the audience. So if anyone wishes to have their comments read at a future meeting, please feel free to send an email to wasikadistrict@gmail.com and I will read your comments at a future board meeting. Or you're welcome to come in person and speak in person. So, all right, moving on then to payment of claims. Director Dunn had it this time.
Yep, and I have a comment after we do this.
Yep.
I reviewed the claims for the month of July and recommend payment of those claims. Counts payable $2,050,626.31, $22,063.59 for July dental, and payroll of $923,391.47.
First and a s- can I get a second?
Second.
All right, and then any discussion? Go ahead.
No, I just have a comment.
Oh, do you want to make, is it a comment about related to this? Or?
Well, I am, let's pass this first.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous.
Okay, this is just kind of a curiosity thing, but after looking through all the claims, I emailed Elizabeth and I said, best guess about how many vendors do we work with? And she sent me back an email and she said, in, in running a list of active vendors, we have a total of 5,157 vendors. Some of these may only be used once per year or we have only used them once overall. We inactivate any users that haven't been used in the past two years. So if you want to take like a two-year running list, it's over 5,000 vendors. That's a lot more. I mean, I knew it would be a lot, but I didn't think it'd be something like that. Got any comments there, Elizabeth?
Keeps us busy.
Definitely does, thank you. That's an interesting curiosity question. All right, moving on then, can I get a motion for our consent agenda?
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda. Second.
I think Adida was first, so. We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on then to information items and we'll begin with the superintendent report.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to kind of getting back to school here for 2022, 23. I just have a few short updates, partially in a back-to-school format, but then also a few things we're doing with strategic planning here coming in the next school year. As you probably have seen, as you've driven by our buildings, our activities are getting up and rolling. Marching Band a couple of weeks ago, but then now also are all of our activities with athletics and arts getting rolling here this week. And it's really exciting to see students and staff getting ready to go back to the building. Our projects are wrapping up on schedule for the most part, which is pretty exciting. We've got a large abatement project. We just were able to close up here recently, as well as you've seen the tuck pointing of things happening at this building, which are on schedule to continue to maintain, be ready to go when kids and staff come back, as well as some internal things that are finishing wrapping up. So kudos to Colin Green, our entire building and ground staff. Our buildings look great and we're looking forward to having staff come back. And as you took your detour in to get here this morning, this evening, if you, if you did come in on the courtyard door, they're finishing up the waxing here this week, here in this building. And, and we're going to look great here when kids come back and our staff revive. Staff and students are starting to hear from their buildings as far as back-to-school schedules and workshop week and open houses and all that things coming on. So if you haven't heard yet from your building about what's happening here in the next couple of weeks, you should be hearing shortly. Otherwise, please feel free to reach out to your building principal or building with what's happening there. I obviously am, I sent out a meet, you probably all saw that, just a welcome back to staff yesterday. Students, families will also receive a message from me tomorrow. Just kind of a welcome back, similar message to what I sent yesterday to our staff. Our handbooks, which you'll be acknowledging here later on this afternoon or this evening are updated and ready to go for this next school year. No significant changes in any of those handbooks that, that were really of any particular note, but we do update them every year and make sure that that's still what we do. And in some cases where we do make some adjustments to practices, such as do we use our lockers? Do we use backpacks? What are our cell phones? All those kinds of things. We update that to make sure it reflects what we're actually doing in our buildings. So principals have done a nice job with that. Also, this evening, I'll be asking you to approve our 2022, 23 health and safety plan with regards to COVID. As you may have, as you probably saw in your packet, a few changes primarily to update to what's happening now with the CDC. Essentially, the, the summary of what we're doing now is basically stay home if you're sick. We do have an isolation five-day process if you do test positive for COVID. And then beyond that, we will do contact tracing and let people know as needed. And what I mean by that is, let's say we have a medically fragile group of students who are exposed, we'll probably be contacting those families, let them know, hey, this happened in your classroom. Otherwise, for the most part, at this point, exposures are inferred in our day-to-day life and we'll just keep you informed as we need to. So really, it's almost identical to what we do with any of our flu-like illnesses or any of our illness policies. Because we received the ESSR money from the federal government, we are required to continue to update this plan. So it has to be a standalone plan other than our regular health and safety plans because of those ESSR dollars. And so I won't go so far as to say it's the same as all the rest of our processes, but at this point, very close to that. So I'll be asking you to update that here later in the meeting, just so we've done that, done that process. But as far as everything else, quarantining, masking, all of that piece now is just strongly recommended in certain situations, but there's no requirement of any of that this year. And one change for us is the CDC does not differentiate household contact versus community contact. So as they did last year with the Department of Health saying, if you're a household contact, you had to quarantine. That's not the case anymore. So we just can go about our business and just stay sick, stay home, that kind of how that process. So I'm feeling more comfortable with that. Staff also did receive a message yesterday, information about the 23, 2023, 2025 calendars with an opportunity to provide feedback on those, similar to, I think I mentioned to you a few weeks ago. And then on tomorrow, the families will also receive that message with that link to provide feedback if they so choose with everything. If you recall, we were essentially, the significant difference right now is, is to spring break or to not spring break. I mean, that's kind of the question to kind of get feedback from families and staff on. And in the meantime, we've gotten lots of good feedback just in the last day or so of things for us to consider. So we'll be collecting that feedback, bringing that to you in the next month or so. If we're prepared, we'll adopt those in September. If not, we'll adopt those in October, if we have some more things to consider. But well ahead of people being able to plan for those next two years. Strategic planning part of my update really is we're continuing to work with and wait for some of the academic results we're waiting for that, that come off of embargo the 25th of August. And so I'll look forward to finishing some of those vision card details here when I'm allowed to share some of those things publicly. Generally speaking, we've gotten better. We've improved overall year over year, which is exciting for us. We've made up some of the gaps in some of our, versus the state average and some of our student groups have done well this last year. So I'm looking forward to being able to share some of that more publicly on the 25th, when we're allowed to, at that point. We are finishing up the final stages of staffing here for this school year. We're prepared in all of our classrooms. Right now, we're filled. We've got a couple of more non-licensed positions to fill, food service and paras and working with that. So, but we're looking forward to starting the school year and getting into those pieces. Community engagement continues to be a focus for us. Community Ed book went out on Monday, the postcard within the online link. And then we're starting to prepare our September newsletter as we discussed in some of our goal conversations with more of that mailing option that we talked about based on our survey results from this spring. Also, just continuing to think about that in communicating about our facility needs, what we have going on for there. And then I guess finally would be just the next few weeks is finishing up this year's operational plan based on our results of last year, getting that prepared to go for this year so that buildings can prepare their vision cards and move forward. So it's going to be an exciting year. I have been talking with folks as they've come back in the buildings. There's a, there's a sense of refresh, I think. This school, we needed that summer break to help us kind of get past what we, no doubt we've had, we've had a few, a few years of things that were different, but we're not going to lament and we're not going to dwell on that. Now we're moving forward and I'm excited about that and what we can do here for the next few years. So here we are. Any questions on that? But that was what I wanted to share with you here tonight.
Thank you. Looking forward to the next few weeks with everyone getting back into the swing of school and yeah. So it is, it's a fun, I think it's fun. Awesome, thank you. All right, if there's no questions then, we'll move on to our report from Ms. Berry.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I have just a couple of quick updates for you. As Eric had also mentioned, we do have more the business side of the handbooks in the board agenda for you this evening as well, both the employee handbook and then we have to do a separate one specific to some of the federal funding that we do receive to make sure that we're being accountable for those funds. Again, no significant changes to note. It's just a really nice time to reflect and review and make sure that what we are saying is clear. And again, if there is any practice that we did adjust, to make sure that it's reflected appropriately within those manuals. So again, that's an annual review. We'll bring another one to you, just our general business practices. And that'll look a little different from prior years. We've kind of had three separate ones, a general business manual, a credit card manual, and then also one for student activities. What we're going to do is combine it into one because there is a lot of overlap between the three categories and bring it out into sections versus having three separate manuals for you to review. So that is what we're working on right now. That's why it's not quite done as we were trying to combine them all. And we'll bring that to you in September. Some other items to note, and I'm going to maybe continue to say this a couple of different times throughout the year. Just as a reminder to all of our family members, food service will be going back to that free, reduced and paid status beginning with this school year. All of the waivers that the federal government did allow for free meals for all of our students, unfortunately, is ending. And so it will be really important for those families that can access benefits for free and reduced meals to complete those applications. I believe household letters should have been sent out, so applications should be available to all families physically. We also have them available on our website under our food service department. Please feel free to contact the district office. If you still cannot find them, we're happy to send them to you, email them to you. We just want to make sure people and families have access to those forms. It's a huge benefit to families. And as we were talking a little bit about in our finance committee earlier, there's a lot of other things that are associated with those applications and benefits that all districts receive based on those free and reduced accounts. So hopefully it's a benefit to our entire district. And again, just another nice way for families to be able to access the benefits. There's another item in the agenda I just wanted to point out specifically. Where we unfortunately need to adjust our adult meal prices. The USDA sets minimum charges that we need to account for regarding all of our meal prices. Our student meal prices are just fine, but we do need, do need to increase our adult meal prices based on the USDA guidance. So we're bringing that to you this evening. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out is this is kind of our levy season and we've talked a little bit about it before. And so right now, we're working with the Department of Education, making sure we supply them all the information that they need to go ahead and start calculating that levy for us. And that'll be a larger topic at our September meeting. We'll be bringing the preliminary levy to you at school board and talk through what those preliminary dollar amounts look like. That final dollar amount will not be approved until December, but this is when we're generating all of the information and those reports are going to be, I think, available September 8th will be the first time that we'll be able to look at what those calculations are turning out to be. Any questions or comments that you might have for me this evening?
I think we are good. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to committee and board member reports. And I'm going to let our student leaders start off because I know Lindsay has to take off soon, so.
So the Wasika Band's garage sale was a really big success last weekend. And we just want to thank everyone who came to support the band and also to all the parents and volunteers that helped set up because that was no small job. There was a lot of stuff. The marching band just finished their second week of band camp. And this is the first time ever that the entire show has been put on the field by the end of band camp. So we are really, really excited at the potential of our show. Our fall preview is on Friday, August 26th at 7:00 PM at the stadium at the high school. So, and everyone is welcome. So please come and support our marching band and come see the first time we will perform the show, titled The Fine Line. And then we also will be performing later that weekend at the state fair on Sunday, August 28th. So if you want some food, also come see the band. And fall sports have also officially begun this week. So we're excited for our sports teams and we wish them luck and we congratulate them on working hard at practice because a lot of them are like four-hour days.
Okay, um, our homecoming kickoff, we finalize everything for the J-Walk. September, sorry, Sunday's September 25th at 11:00 AM. It's $5 per walker and $20 for a whole family. Registration, you have to register for the J-Walk. It begins at 10:30 AM. For walking trail past South Bubfields to Loon Lake Park and back, which is where we'll be walking. It's only a three-mile walk and it will, all the proceeds will go to the spring council projects and activities. For homecoming week, spring council has finalized a beanbag tournament to add on this year for grades nine through 12, Wednesday night of the homecoming week. And a Blue J alumni are again invited back, 10-year, 25-year and 50-year anniversary. So we'll be celebrating those at the parade and at the home. That's everything. That's pretty much all we got.
I'm sure you guys are busy with activities starting up again and all that stuff, so yeah. Thank you. Adida, do you want to continue?
They don't have any committees this month.
Charlie? I know, it's been, it's been quiet on the board front. Katie, do you have things?
The finance committee met and like Elizabeth said, the free and reduced forms are so important because they, they actually go with three title programs. Title one, what is it? Title one, title two and title four. And the title one has to do with reading and math and that helps pay for the teachers, correct, Elizabeth? With that one?
Yep.
And then title two is district-wide and that's with teacher development. And title four has to do with teacher and/or students with the well-rounded education. And we do safety and health for the students. It also goes with tech, but we spend a lot of tech other ways. We fund that different ways. So that was kind of my, my stuff.
Yeah, thanks for expanding on that, how important that application is that we, that families turn in. So yeah. Um, yeah, I didn't have any committees this month either, so I will. I'm quick, so.
So actually, the other one I had was personnel. And that basically, the only thing we really talked about was how do we get and keep our diverse staff? So that's a big one. And really, the biggest thing I can say about the finance one was it's not just one area that that covers. It really is a wide, broad spectrum of what, what that money is spent on and where we get money through. So it's really important.
Something that benefits students and the school district.
Yep, yep.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I don't have anything either.
I would imagine next month we'll all. It's, yeah, it's the, it's the slow, slow time of, yeah, of board reporting, yes. All right, moving on then to recognitions and positive board feedback. And Lindsay, if you want to start off?
Pick us off again. So I just want to say thank you to everyone, all the marching J staff, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Downey, Mr. Fritz, all of our interns that have been working with us this year and any band parents that have volunteered, people who helped at the garage sale, the neighborhood service center for taking all of the donations of the unsold items after the garage sale. There were two full trailers that we shipped to the service center. So we're really glad that we could help our community and I just want to thank everyone who's helping us out. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone who is, all the coaches, players, everyone who's dealing with these fall sports. Might be a little rough the first couple of weeks, but I know they're working.
You guys lucked out with some nice weather for your first week of fall sports though.
It's a little too nice outside. Okay, I can deal with a little bit chillier weather.
Yeah. Nice. Adida?
Yeah, they covered whatever I wanted.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Well, I've been driving, drive by the high school pretty much on a daily basis and the number of cars out there increases every day. So people are back, people are back, getting ready to go back to school again. So drove by the other morning and the band was out there just to practice in a way. So congratulations to you guys, got your program going. So, so I think everybody's excited to be back. I, I know there's, I know we got a couple of granddaughters out there that want to get back to school. They just get a little bit, you know, at the end of the summer, they get a little bit antsy and it's time, time to go back to work again.
Parents are antsy too. This parent is antsy.
Parent relief, is that what we're talking about?
I just wanted to, I was, I spent some time today scrolling through the fall catalog for community education, all the programs that are in there. And I'm always, I'm always impressed at the number of activities that community ed organizes throughout the year. So, but I did notice a, a blurb in there. They're looking for more people to serve on the advisory council for community ed. So if anyone at home is watching and they're looking for a way to maybe serve their community, this is something that just meets, I think it's just once a month or quarterly. Every three months, yeah, so quarterly. So, and we do have a board member that serves on that. So Adida is our, our current representative for the, for that advisory council. But I think you would agree, it's probably a pretty fun committee to serve on. And so if anyone's looking for something to do, community ed advisory council. And you can find information about that on the community ed webpage on our website. Or if you're looking for the fall catalog, you can find it there also, so.
I don't have anything.
And just piggyback on what you just said, I hope everybody got one of these in the mail, having to do with the community ed fall brochure. And you said it very well. And then I brought this from the paper. All-state band, Ryan Lee, Eddie Bomsta and Hannah LaCroix. And then Lindsay Kapetsky and Cece Hutmeyer were in the all-state choir. So I just thought.
Yeah, very cool. Thank you.
Seen the pictures in the paper.
Awesome, thank you. Grant?
Most of the stuff I was going to say have been covered also. I did want to note, we have later on to approve gifts and donations and we get those every month. And they're, they're an item, they get passed by. But it's really nice, it's sometimes surprising and nice that there are a lot of people and organizations that contribute to what the school does. And it makes, I guess for us as a board, it makes us feel supported, makes feel that it's not just the school that does it, the community supports it. So thank you for all the people who dedicate or donate their finances to it.
Thank you. All right, well, thanks, everyone, for your reports and your positive feedback. We can move on then to our action items. Can I get a motion then for item eight?
Will we approve the acceptance of received gifts and donations?
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? So once again, this is our student shed project. Is, had some more donations towards that project, so. But yeah, I agree with what Grant said. I appreciate everyone that donates to the school and I'm glad that we have a way to recognize it every month as well. So if there's no further discussion, we will call for a vote and this is a roll call. So Caitlin, if you could, call the roll.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Devil?
Yes.
Katie Youngford?
Yes.
Charlie Creve?
Yes.
Adida Mansfield?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. And then the next one is a resolution. How much of this resolution needs to be read? All of it or?
Yeah, you probably should read the whole thing.
Does anyone want to read this resolution? Does anyone have it?
They're short paragraphs.
Where is it? Where is it?
I have it online, I can read it. All right, so I will, I will read this resolution and make the motion. This is a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 829, State of Minnesota, as follows. A, one, it is necessary for the school, for the school district to hold its general election for the purpose of electing four school bar members for terms of four years each. B, the clerk shall include on the ballot the names of the individuals who filed or have filed affidavits of candidacy during the period established for filing such affidavits, as though they have been included by name in this resolution. The clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by law. Two, the general election is hereby called and elected to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, the 8th day of November, 2022. Three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A, um, point 111, the precincts and polling places for this general election are those polling places and precincts, or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district and which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The voting hours at those polling places shall be the same as for the state general election. Four, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said general election to be provided to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located, in whole or in part, at least 74 days before the date of said election. The notice shall include the date of said general election and the office or offices to be voted on at said general election. Any notice given prior to the date of the adoption of this resolution is ratified and confirmed in all respects. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said general election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days before the date of said general election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said general election, and to cause two sample ballots to be posted in each polling place on Election Day. The sample ballot shall be printed, shall not be printed on the same color paper as the official ballot. The sample ballot for a polling place must reflect the offices, candidates, and rotation sequence on the ballots used in that polling place. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said general election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of said election. The notice of election so posted and published shall state the offices to be filled, set forth in the form of ballot below, and shall include information concerning each established precinct and polling place. The clerk is authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use of the optical scan voting system to be posted in each polling place on Election Day. Five, the clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials as may be necessary for the proper conduct of this election, and generally to cooperate with election authorities conducting other elections on that date. The clerk and members of the administration are authorized and directed to take such actions as may be necessary to coordinate this election with those other elections, including entering into agreements or understandings with appropriate election officials regarding preparation and distribution of ballots, election administration, and cost sharing. The clerk is further authorized and directed to cause or to cooperate with the proper election officials to cause ballots to be prepared for use at said election in substantially the following form, with such changes in form, color, and instructions as may be necessary to accommodate an optical scan voting system. Do I need to?
Then you can go down probably to the text below.
Yeah, so there is instruct, or sample of what a ballot would look like and be submitted. Um, optical scan ballots must be printed in black ink on white material, except that marks to be read by the automatic tabulating equipment may be printed in another color ink. The name of the precinct and machine readable identification must be printed on each ballot. Voting instructions must be printed at the top of the ballot, on each side of that, on each side that includes ballot information. The instructions must include an illustration of the proper mark to be used to indicate a vote. Lines for initials of at least two election judges must be printed on one side of the ballot, so that the judges' initials are visible when the ballots are enclosed in a, in a secrecy sleeve. The name of each candidate for offices at this election shall be rotated with the names of the other candidates for the same office in the manner specified in Minnesota law. If, uh, eight, uh, if the school district will be contracting to print the ballots for this election, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to prepare instructions to the printer for layout of the ballot. Before a contract in excess of $1,000 is awarded for printing ballots, the printer shall, if requested by the election official, furnish in accordance with Minnesota Statute Section 204D, point 04, a sufficient bond, letter of credit, or certified check acceptable to the clerk in an amount not less than $1,000, conditioned on printing the ballots in conformity with the Minnesota election law and the instructions delivered. The clerk shall set the amount of the bond, letter of credit, or certified check in an amount equal to the value of the purchase. Nine, the individuals designated as judges for the state general election shall act as elected judges for this election at the various polling places, and shall conduct said election in the manner described by law. The election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots cast, and submit them to the school board for canvass in the manner provided for other school district elections. The general election must be canvassed between the 3rd and the 10th day following the general election. The school district clerk shall make all campaign financial reports required to be filed with the school district under Minnesota Statute Section 211A, point 02, available on the school district's website. The clerk must post the report on the school district's website as soon as possible, but no later than 30 days after the date of the receipt of the report. The school district must make a report available on the school district's website for four years from the date the report was posted to the website. The clerk must also provide the Campaign Finance and Public Disclosure Board with a link to the section of the website where reports are made available. There. I am done reading, anyone, anyone want to make a second? Thank you. All right, any discussion? If not, I will authorize, Caitlin, could you please read the roll?
Grant Shepherd?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Dummel?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Charlie Creve?
Yes.
Adita Mansfield?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, uh, motion carries unanimous. I need a minute. Can I get a motion for item C?
I make a motion to approve health and safety measure for 2022, 2023.
Second.
Uh, we have a first and a second, any discussion?
The only note I would make, um, is that they, upon your approval, we'll put them on the website where our current, they'll replace the current documents. They're included in the packet in case anybody wanted to see them ahead of time in the public, but then we'll put them on a website pending your approval.
Perfect. Any other discussion or comments? All right, hearing none, we will call, uh, we'll do a roll call again. Caitlin?
Grant Shepherd?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Dummel?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Charlie Creve?
Yes.
Adita Mansfield?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. Um, all right, so before we move on to item D, let's, um, have a little discussion about our board goals, and then we can, um, we can approve them after we discuss. So, um, do you, are you able to put them up or on the board, or? Does anyone have a copy in front of them, or?
It's linked in your agenda as well.
Right, yeah. Did anyone have anything they wanted to add, or, um, set a personal goal for themselves that they wanted to talk about, or?
I was just going to suggest, um, possibly doing a board retreat of some type. I don't have anything in mind, um, for a topic, or a location, or whatever, but just, I guess, maybe doing something like that.
Yeah, they used to do those.
We haven't had one for quite a while, so. Probably under board training, yeah.
Sure.
So, add board retreat.
Is that something we would need to list as a goal, or more of an execution plan on that goal?
Yeah, more probably a practice, or, or a, something we'd list under there?
Well, it could kind of be like a measurement, you know, an item, like, be like a objective measurement, or whatever, so if our, if our goal is to invest in ongoing school board development and learning opportunities, one of the things to measure by would be, we've had a board retreat, so. Yeah. Any other things? I mean, there, there was a talk about maybe making personal goals or individual goals, um, but we can also, we don't necessarily have to make that public, you can all, I mean, me personally, I hope to contribute to the quarterly newsletter, um, but it doesn't need to be, like, put on this form or anything, so.
You definitely know what we need to include on the document, right?
Yeah, but otherwise, I mean, if we're, if we're happy with this, with just the addition of, of a board retreat, um, if anyone wants to make a motion, feel free, or we can keep discussing, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve what's up there, and maybe add in a possible board retreat.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. And thank you, Eric, for your work on organizing, and Elizabeth and Caitlin, um, organizing what we all talked about at, at the, during the work session, so. All right, uh, moving on then to item E. Oh, do we have to read this one again?
I think for this, for this one, if you read the initial resolved, and the second further resolved, that should be good.
Okay. Does anyone else want to read, or do you enjoy listening to me talk?
Pretty quick.
All right, I can, all right, I will make a motion. Um, this is for approving our 2022, 2023 Resolution for Minnesota State High School League membership. So, resolved at the Governing Board of Wasika Public Schools, School, County of Wasika, State of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events, referred to in Minnesota Statute Section 128C, point 01, to the Minnesota State High School League, and so here, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. And then, then the further resolved, or which part?
Further resolved that we're renewing, and then they'll find the second further resolved paragraph that the Governing Board hereby, that one.
Further resolved that the high schools listed below, um, are renewing, or, so the high schools listed are Wasika Senior High School and Wasika Area Learning Center, um, are authorized by this, the Governing Board of said school district or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League, and participate in the approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolved that this Governing Board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league, and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook, on file at the office of the school district or school, or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representatives identified by this Governing Board. Okay. We have a, we have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, first and a second. Any further discussion?
What would happen if we don't approve it?
Then our kids don't get to play in the high school league. They wouldn't have anybody to play.
They would only play non-high school leagues. Schools probably would start probably a few more between.
Right. If any that I can think of, yeah.
And I'm, I, am I correct in here? I think I read somewhere that they've adjusted their membership fees, is that correct? Or is it, because it was pretty high for a, a couple of years, right?
Yeah, they did some, they did some kind of one-time adjustments here the last few years based on revenues that they did not receive from state tournaments, and they've adjusted that back down to, to norm, to, I'd say, not pre-pandemic, but closer down their levels, so, um, I'm comfortable with the, with the league fee at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
And a few months ago, didn't we also approve our representatives, you and Joe, and a few others?
Last month, yeah. And typically, we would have brought that, this resolution to the July meeting as well, it just didn't. It wasn't all prepared yet at that time, from the state.
I suppose while we could argue that it's, we're, don't necessarily have a choice, we also are involved in the decisions they make.
We do have representation on the high school league, yes.
Yeah.
Through, uh, through both, uh, um, activities directors, superintendents are represented on that.
Coaches.
Coaches, they have representation on there, yeah.
Yep. Any further discussion or comments? All right, hearing none, then we'll call for a vote, and again, this is a roll call, so Caitlin?
Grant Shepherd?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Scott Dummel?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Charlie Creve?
Yes.
Adita Mansfield?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2022, 2023, uh, contract between Wasika Area School, for the Wasika Area Schools therapeutic program.
Second.
Uh, first and a second, I think it was Adita, um, yes. Um, any discussion? So again, this is an annual agreement, um, between Wasika Public Schools and South Central Human Relations Center, so.
Yeah.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Um, item, uh, G is acknowledging the 2022, 2023 Employee Handbook. Um, it is linked in, um, the agenda, if you would like to scroll through it. And the, some of the school board initially approved the adoption of this handbook in January of 2014, and, um, we are acknowledging the annual updates to the handbook. Item H is acknowledging the 2022, 2023 Fiscal Compliance Manual. Again, uh, it is linked in the agenda. This was initially adopted in January 2017, and this is, this handbook is a requirement for the district's federal funds. It informs staff associated with the federal programs about the specific federal parameters and business procedures that, to be followed. This is an acknowledgement of updates for the year, and again, and Elizabeth did mention this in her update as well. Item I is acknowledging the 2022, 2023 School Handbooks as presented. Um, again, these are updates to handbooks that are presented to the board annually, and each handbook is linked, so.
And if I could make one comment on that, is that as board members are seeing those handbooks, if you have questions, it doesn't have to just be now, it could be anytime. Please, please present them to myself, or the principal, or director of that particular program. These are constantly evolving based on our, what we're working with. So we, we acknowledge them annually, kind of a refresh of a beginning of a school year, but it doesn't mean that if you find something in September that you have a question about, that you are not welcome to ask it, so.
And I did want to say, we formally have officially approved each of these handbooks, and Eric and I have talked, like, for really over the last year, like, does it really need, there's no policy that says we have to approve these, um, and they're kind of really working documents. So for us to, like, approve it, it kind of makes it sound like it's final, whereas acknowledging updates annually is a little bit more really what they, what they are, so. Um, but if anyone has any comments about any of these handbooks, and you'd like to share that, please feel free, um, or share with them at any time, so. And all of these do get posted online as well, so. All right, uh, moving on then to item J. Can I get someone to make a motion for item J?
I'll make a motion we approve the additional fundraisers as presented and adapted.
Second.
First and a second. Uh, any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item K?
I'll make a motion that we approve the revised 2022, 2023 Food Service Prices.
Second.
First and a second. And again, Elizabeth explained this during her update, why this, we just approved the food service prices, but this, this is an explanation of why we have to approve them again. So that was, that change in, um, in the minimum was, we weren't aware of at the time, so. Uh, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Uh, can I get a motion for item L?
I make a motion to approve disposal of materials as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Uh, first and a second. And these are materials that are obsolete, um, with minimal remaining value, so. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right, and that leads us to the end of our action items. Um, so upcoming items and reminders, well, back to school is the big one. So, so next week, we have new teachers coming next week.
New teachers next week.
And then the following week is all, yeah.
All teachers. Please be watching for your open houses, back-to-school conferences. Um, fall activities, there are some contests before school does formally come back, so continue to pay attention to that as well.
Yep. And then first day of school, September 6th, for 7/12, and then K6 will be a couple of days later, and, yeah. So exciting stuff. Um, all right, make note that our next work session is Thursday, September 8th, so that is the second Thursday, not the first Thursday of the month. So Thursday, September 8th, and then, um, and we moved that so that we could get a, an update on how the first couple of days of school were going, and that kind of thing. Um, and then our, um, regular meeting is September 22nd, that's the fourth Thursday, not the third Thursday. So September is a little funny, um, October will be a little funny as well when we deal with MEA and stuff like that. Um, I was thinking during, um, when I was talking, reading that lovely general election resolution, but our, our Thursday, our November regular election works within that seven to 10-day. Okay, perfect. All right, any other announcements or reminders that we can think of? Enjoy the last couple of days of summer, so. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.